I would like to call the order of the July meeting of the Mooresville Planning and Zoning Board. If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Chairman, there are not.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
On favor? Aye. We got updated minutes. Any further review or comments on the updated minutes? All right. And thank you, Chris, for your diligent parsing of those minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second? On favor? Aye. And just for the record, Rick Bane will be the voting member, voting alternate this week in the absence of Tim Totori. So we can move forward. Do we have any public comment tonight that is not on either of the two items that will come up later on? Just general comment? Okay, seeing none, we can move forward to the Town Center Development Agreement presentation.
So, thank you, Chairman. Just for some introductory comments as reminder, this item was initially heard at your June 13th meeting. The board did have some questions, raised some concerns. Staff has been working to address those. We are back this evening with some updates on the proposed development agreement. This evening, you're gonna get kind of a tag team presentation in a moment here. I'm gonna be handing it over to our town attorney Frank Gray, who is going to review some of the legalities related to development agreements. You're then gonna hear from the SING team. They're gonna provide some updates on the project in general. That is really for your information. They're gonna be sharing some building elevations, some preliminary designs. But just as a reminder, the architecture, the site plan, building heights, the traffic, all of that was previously approved as part of the planned development agreement and rezoning. That was before this council, or before the Planning and Zoning Board a few months ago and previously approved by council. But did think this was a good opportunity to just share some general information about the project and the status. So you will hear from the SING team on that. And then Town Manager Brandon Zudema will be presenting to you as well, giving you updates on the development agreement itself, which is your action item for tonight, and we'll be reviewing those standards of approval with you. I know that there were some questions about that at the prior meeting. But with that, want to hand it over to Attorney Frank Gray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Pleasure to be with you. For those of you that I haven't met, I'm Frank Gray and I'm a town attorney for the town of Mooresville. I have sat with you on a couple of occasions recently, not recently, but I did some training at Michelle's request back when you were doing quasi judicial hearings and such. So it's a pleasure to be with you again tonight. Before jumping into the legal stuff, I wanted to take just a moment of personal privilege to say that I've been to countless meetings over the past 20 years on the town center issue. And I was thinking, as I was waiting for the meeting to be convened, I can name five mayors off the top of my head and their councils that wrestle with this issue. So it's a very, very important issue, and it's an issue that the town has been working on for many, many years. And of course, the issue is the fact that the town, as it's developed, has never had a true downtown or town center that would be a mix of residential and business and a natural gathering place for town citizens. And so after those countless meetings, running up the flagpole, different ways to make that work, the one thing that's clear, I think, to anybody and everyone that's involved in it is that the town center will never be constructed with just private investment. If that was the case, it would have been done already. And likewise, it won't be constructed with pure town investment because it's way too much of an investment for town government to make. So the solution is to have both involved, have a public-private partnership. That's the phrase that you'll hear all through the presentation tonight. And, you know, we're not unusual. There are lots of towns and cities that are in the same predicament. And the School of Government created a separate division to work with towns and cities on public-private partnerships and development alternatives for town centers. And so we have been fortunate to have the benefit of their expertise in this whole effort. So, thank you for my personal two minutes. As far as the legal stuff goes, our legislature created this thing called a development agreement tool five years ago. And you see on the slide two there that they made as part of their enacting the law several findings. And I picked these three because I think they're the ones that are the most applicable to what we're talking about tonight. So finding number two is that development projects often occur in multiple phases over several years. And in order for that to work, it requires a long-term commitment from both sides. And finding number three is that because of the scale and duration of the projects, they require careful coordination, facilities planning, financing, and construction schedules. And then finding number four is that the projects involve substantial commitments of private capital. And in order for that to happen, the developers are not willing to do that without assurances that the standards will remain in place and the agreement will remain in place for an extended period. So to me, that's the background that we're operating in. And in order to carry out those findings, the legislature has a long list of statutes that require what must be contained in the development agreement. And so the town manager is gonna walk you through a high-level review of what's in the development agreement. And my partner Lori Jones, who's in the front row here next to Elliot, has taken the laboring oar in working on the actual document with the attorneys who represent SING. And she's here and happy to answer any questions if we get into the weeds. But one important point to note is that the development agreement statutes do not require the planning board to review and approve a development agreement. It's not part of the state law. So why are we here tonight? We're here tonight because of Unified Development Ordinance, the UDO that the council has adopted, provides that the application should be reviewed with you and that you should make a recommendation to council. So the source of our review tonight comes from the UDO. And I know from years of experience sitting with council that they value your opinion, and they take what you say with high degree of importance. And I'm sure they will do likewise with this matter. After the manager completes his presentation and the staff answers any questions you have, Michelle is gonna review with you the standards for development agreement review and ask for your recommendation. And I'm here through the entire presentation as well. If you have any questions, be happy to answer from the legal corner. But appreciate your service very much, appreciate your time and attention to this. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you.
Thank you.
I think we'll hand it over to the SING team to give you an update on the project.
Good evening. Hello again.
Good evening, thank you.
We have similar images to what you saw last month. I'm going to run through these very briefly at a high level, just in case there's any context or questions needed related to the balance of the presentation. So as we talked about last month, the area in green is the public park that is being subject to the discussion tonight, along with some of the right-of-way improvements, which you see in Foxglove to the right, Carolina Street, and some of the plazas around the multifamily building to the north or the upper corner of the park. As a reminder, there are several key components to the park. We have the ellipse or the lawn in the middle, which is our kind of circular gathering space. It's a symbol of community. We've got a series of commercial structures to the right, which open onto Foxglove and provide food, beverage, and retail opportunities to activate the park. We have a stage area down to the south that will allow for a range of public performances back by a grove, which is kind of an informal gathering space. We have the pockets over to the west along Town Hall Drive, which is where we're creating some tree save and some informal play opportunities. And then we have a public art feature up to the north end. Quick view of the public art feature. This is a feature that was requested by town council. It combines public art, a miss system for children's play, as well as color-changing LED lights in a series of teardrop plazas that step down into the park. This is a view along the lawn side of the cottages, which are the retail components, offering some seating areas overlooking the lawn. Quick review of the structures. We are providing some shared amenities for the park. This is a bathroom structure that will serve all of the park, all of the cottages. This is a view of some of the character that we're looking at for the park to provide something distinctive and unique for the town of Mooresville. This is a support building located behind the stage, which will allow for some green room dressing, as well as some convenience toilets, and support for the community garden. And again, some views of this. This would be the digital display signage at the little entry plaza to the park from Foxglove. This is a view looking down Foxglove Drive towards that digital display and art. And then this is a view of the stage, which will be a multivalent structure allowing for a range of informal events, as well as formal events like concerts and live performances. And then finally, the west side of the park. This is the view over the pockets with some of the natural playground structures, the potential public art sign for the park. And then lastly, some support structures like enclosed trash and storage to support the cottages, the park, and perhaps future development as well. Streetscape materials we'll cover real briefly. Again, the critical zones are Foxglove, which is a shared pedestrian and vehicular drive along the east side of the cottages. And this is intended to be activated at times with food trucks, fairs, and other events. This is the Block A retail plaza that you'll hear discussed, which links the library and the commercial zone. And then obviously, the intersection and the extension of the streetscape out towards Carolina. These are some early concept sketches showing different areas of paving types. This is one of the studies of the different paving patterns and zones on Foxglove. And again, an overall view. Do you want to speak to Jeremiah? Okay. Carolina Street, which is setting up the streetscape for future development potentially on both sides. This is the tabletop intersection between Carolina and Foxglove. Some of the early light fixture options from Duke Power, which will be evaluated. Early concept lighting plan for the public spaces and for the park itself. And these are some views of the mixed-use multifamily retail building. This is a view from Carolina Street. This would be the elevation that faces towards the park.
Yeah, and then, you know, as you can see in this image, there'll be a little pocket park between the library and this mixed-use building. The library is not on the screen right now, but it's to the left of the screen here. See it on the next image. Yeah, here you go, a different angle of the same area, same view. But now you can see the library there in the background with the little pocket park in between. And this is a new image. You guys didn't see this last month, but this would be a view looking down on Jeremiah Street. Again, this is not a fully developed design quite yet, but the idea here is to, you know, make it more of a residential scaled street. The units on the lower level would have stoops that go out to the sidewalk, kind of trying to mirror what's happening further down Jeremiah Street with the townhomes there that have stoops that go out to the sidewalk. These are just 2D elevations of the same spaces. We can flip back to here if you guys have questions.
And we're happy to go through any details. We just wanted to respect your time at a high level, since there's a lot of material to cover with.
Thank you. Do we have any questions about this specific part? Chris?
I just have a couple of questions on the cottages. Do they have bathrooms inside each one of the cottage units, or do they use the centralized restrooms?
They will use the centralized restrooms, which are located in the center of two cottages on each side.
Okay.
If the user desires to have their own bathroom, they'll be able to put, we'll be able to put one in for them, but...
So you're saying like rough plumbing will be provided?
Yes, exactly.
And then those employees would park where? In the structure when it's built, or do they pay to park? Where would those people park?
There's adequate parking on the entire campus within the structure. There's a surface lot, there's street parking, so within somewhere on the campus, there'll be parking for the employees.
And then in the winter months, you're going to close those restaurants at dusk at 6:00? So November, December, you'll be closing those shops at 6:30 in the evening?
That hasn't been determined yet. We wouldn't know.
And then one other question, are there sprinklers on the park? Yes.
Irrigation can be provided. That's still in discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Chris's question about the parking. Honestly, I'm a little bit confused about it. My question really is, you know, Page Eight of the previous PowerPoint talked about the parking deck with the community spaces. I don't think it was this one. It was the one you presented last meeting. And then it also, you know, talked about the amenities that the parking would provide for. So, you know, the town is supposed to provide, I think, four public events per quarter, so 16 a year. And I'm wondering, is the parking sufficient for the residents, the retailers, the visitors to the retail shop, the visitors to the town center, and patrons of the library?
Yes, I mean broadly, yes. I mean, for the major events that are supposed to happen four times a quarter, probably won't accommodate, you know, the, you know, like the July 4th event we had here last week. I think there was 5,000 some folks that attended that event. I don't think there is, the town center here wouldn't, or at least its first phase wouldn't accommodate that many, that many cars.
So are you talking just a total of 80 parking spaces for everybody?
Uh, no, I don't, I'm...
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. So we have a minimum of 80 spaces that'll be reserved in that parking deck for public use. The library will still retain some of their own parking spaces for them, and then they'll have access to those public spaces in the deck. We'll talk about that in a few minutes, but a minimum of 80 is what's required. Our current conversation is that we could be closer to 100. Some of that depends on the final design of the deck and some of the things around there. And then there's also public parking available on the existing Foxglove Drive between Jeremiah and Carolina. We'll be adding some parking spaces along Carolina. There'll be parking spaces on the Foxglove Extension that comes down from Carolina to Town Hall Drive. And then there's also parking in the area around what is now sort of the farmer's market or the Healthy Food Hub. They'll be parking there as well, all of which can support that. And then the other thing I would mention is that we are aiming for this to be sort of a multimodal access point, so we expect that people that will attend some of this will walk down Town Hall Drive, will come in off the Greenway, could maybe come in off the shuttle. So I agree with Avi. When we hold our bigger events, we know we're not going to park everyone for that, and we'll shuttle like we've done in some events in the past. But we do believe we've got adequate parking. We've actually increased the parking over the course of developing this, and we're well in excess of what's the minimum requirement, but we recognize that that's a minimum requirement. And so we've added as much as we think we can. I would also, last thing, and I'll stop. You know, there are future phases coming, and we fully anticipate at least one more deck in a future phase that would also support this once we get going with it.
Is it anticipated then that the residents are going to use that public parking you talked about on the streets surrounding the town center?
No, the expectation is the residents and the multifamily will each have two, one or two spots, depending on, I think, size of apartment, in that deck.
Okay.
A minimum one space for bedroom, but I think we are over that right now.
Okay. And the last question I have regarding the parking is, is there going to be a cost for the parking for either the residents or whoever comes there to park?
I'll let Avi answer the resident question.
From a resident perspective, no, it'd likely be included as part of their rent or a package, as part of their rent. I think what we typically do, and again, we haven't, you know, we're a couple of years away from having a finished building, but what typically would be, there would be a minimum amount of parking spaces per unit, and then if somebody wanted an additional parking space, there might be a fee required for that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Mr. Sack, just for the public parking, no charge. We will providing all parking from the town at no cost.
Thank you.
I have one question. In regards to, with all the development here too, and I know it's probably been considered, have you looked at and how we follow under planning is the tree canopy aspect of things, especially with everything going on in regards to the allocation of greenery or trees, what's all coming, because that's a lot, that's a lot there, so.
I may let Fred jump into that a little bit, but absolutely, that's been a clear emphasis for us from a sustainability standpoint, and certainly council has emphasized that. And I'll let Fred speak to some of the specifics. Pardon me getting out of the way.
We've been very careful. Most of the viable hardwood trees on the site are along the west edge of the park near Town Hall Drive. So that's the area we've been careful with the design, working around the gas easement that exists there, and designing around the pockets to allow for tree save in that zone. And then additionally, we are looking at introducing another new grove of trees as part of the grove to the south of the stage. And then finally, obviously, we will be having our traditional street trees along the Foxglove Extension.
Thank you. And that grows in an area where there are no trees now, correct? That's the little edge of the farmer's market?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we can proceed, I guess, and Mr. Sack, if you want to.
Yep, I will. Come on up.
You can bowl them out of the way with your cart and...
Suggestion, if you're going on vacation, leave the beach volleyball to younger people. All right. Can you, Brooke, help me get up to the other presentation? Sorry.
That's the least I can do for you.
All right. No, we're good. So, good evening again. Thank you for your time tonight. We're glad to be back with you. So just to highlight of what we're hoping to accomplish tonight with the Planning and Zoning Board. Again, a background on the purpose and benefits of a public-private partnership. I'm going to introduce Eric Thomas with DFI in just a couple of minutes. Again, an overview of the town center project and the development agreement particularly, which is what we're going to ask you to support. An overview of the current budget estimate and the value the town receives in return for that budget. Again, that is not necessarily a component of approval for PZB, but we want you to be able to see that and understand what that looks like as it goes to council for further consideration and likely revision. And then certainly answering any of the remaining questions. And then we'll seek your approval of this development agreement tonight, hopefully before going to town council. You've already heard from Town Attorney Gray. I'm going to offer you just a quick project history before I turn it over to Eric to talk to you about the public-private partnership. So I think what's unique about this is, you know, this is not the typical review in the sense that we're not bringing you a finished product like you would typically see. We're bringing you, in this case, specifically the development agreement and asking for your review of the components of that agreement. Both you and town council have already taken actions, I think Michelle alluded to that earlier, to further this project towards the adoption of the development agreement. That includes, and I'll speak to these in a second, but includes review of the planned development and the rezoning earlier this year. And again, so tonight, we're asking you to approve the development agreement, recognizing that there have already been some decisions made, and there are other decisions that will still come after this as it's finalized through discussion with council. So what we're asking tonight is to review the development agreement to affirm that it's structured so that it supports the vision for the town center project as is recommended in the future land use plan adopted by council, meet the requirements of 2.5.24D of the UDO, ensure that it provides public amenities in exchange for town funding, and provides a destination that includes a mixed use of retail, commercial, residential, and recreational options to support the activation of this area as our downtown and a destination. So given prior approvals and some of the review that's already occurred, tonight, we're not asking you to look at the selection of Singh or the sale of the town property. Those decisions have been made and approved. Again, you've already approved the rezoning, establishing a Main Street development, and then not asking you specifically to approve the costs. Again, we are going to share with you what the current estimate is based on the pre-construction estimate that was done in June by Bobbitt Construction, who is working with Singh Development. So with that, I want to take a few minutes to let you hear from Eric Thomas. Eric is a senior...
Associate Director.
Associate Director, sorry. I missed the promotion. My apologies. Associate Director with the Development Finance Initiative with UNC School of Government. So he has worked with us for a really, really long time.
I think the first meeting I attended on the town center was in 2015.
So he's been with us for a while on this project, probably longer than anticipated. But I want to let him, as an expert with this, to share with you the value of a public-private partnership, expand on what Frank shared with you in terms of why we're in a public-private partnership, and then I'll circle back and we'll go more through the actual agreement, and then we'll try to answer questions for you as we go. Sorry.
Thanks for having me here tonight. Really nice to meet you all, and I know the role of the Planning and Zoning Board, you do wonderful work and really important work, helping town of Morrisville grow in a viable sustainable way. As Brandon mentioned, my name is Eric Thomas, and I work for the Development Finance Initiative out of UNC Chapel Hill School of Government. DFI, we provide local governments all across the state of North Carolina support on community and economic development goals around real estate development, so essentially helping them structure public-private partnerships in legal ways to achieve their public interests. As Brandon mentioned, I first was here in 2015, talking with council, talking with community members about public interests around the town center core. It's been a long process to get to where we are today. There's been developers at the table previously, a lot of plans, a lot of proposals, but I think all of us in this room are very excited about where we are right now. As I mentioned, DFI, who I represent, I'm at the School of Government. We are here to support local governments and sit on the side of the table of the local government, negotiate public-private partnerships around real estate development projects. I'm not going to get into the legal details that Frank talked about. I am not an attorney. I am a planner and a designer and focus on real estate development, so I don't want to overstep my bounds by talking what Frank and Lori specialize in, but I've seen a lot of development agreements and have helped with the deal points around the real estate components of those deal points in development agreements. And as stated on this slide here, a lot of these components of development agreements focus around the construction of both public and private facilities. And as Brandon mentioned earlier, the town of Morrisville has the skill set and the expertise to construct private facilities, but lacks the capacity, the expertise, and really doesn't want to be in the role of a commercial real estate developer. And based on the interest of the town center not just being public facilities, it made all the sense in the world to have a public-private partnership realize the full buildout of the town center core. So what's included, I think Fred and Avi did an excellent job overviewing all the components. The town center core is a mix of both public and private facilities, very much intermingled in overlapping in lots of unique ways. The cottage retail within the town green, that is a unique component where you have private development within a overall public sphere of a town center green. The commercial multifamily components, the vertically mixed use, the parking deck that supports both public and private uses, all lends itself very much to a public-private partnership arrangement. Why is it important that a public-private partnership was established for this project specifically? One is because there's a ton of different projects and designs and engineers, architects, developers, town staff, planners, that are working on this project simultaneously. If you were thinking about the different public and private components, that is a lot of opportunities for inefficiency when thinking about two separate organizations in their silos working on projects individually. It made sense in this process to have both teams come together, work off one unified design, work with one group of unified engineers, work with one group of essentially meetings to coordinate all the different development components with this project. We want to be as efficient as possible, we want to be as coordinated as possible to prevent any chance that we'd have to go back and revisit projects or do over things that were done, maybe inaccurately over the first phase, if we were working individually. So by having these groups at the table together, in DFI's opinion, it made a lot of sense to have one overarching public-private partnership for this specific project. One thing also worth noting through this process is that there are multiple developers that solicited their proposals for the town center, and Singh was selected based on their expertise in this project, their experience, and so it was a competitive process to get to the point where we are today with having Singh at the table as the best partner for the town to move forward on this project. And the last thing, I think I touched on this also, is having this public-private partnership and this deal that we're working on right now is a really valuable piece to, one, be efficient in the overall design and the investment of very important dollars to the project, but, two, it allows for both the public and the private sector to provide components that are really valuable to the success of each other. Thinking about the town green and the plaza, that's really critical to the success of the retail that Singh is developing, but also Singh developing the parking deck with those spaces that are going to be very valuable for the public to come into the town center to celebrate the town activities, visit the retail spaces. So there's very much a collaborative nature between the partnership that's been established. So that's what I have tonight, just kind of talk high-level about public-private partnerships. If you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer those or what DFI has done in this process also.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we can proceed. Thank you.
Okay. So want to give you just some project history of how we got to where we are today with this round of the town center efforts. So town council adopted their town center policy back in the fall of 2020, and that was intended to put some guidance for staff and for the development of a request for proposals in place prior to doing that, to ensure that we were doing that in a proper and fair manner. And then in February 2021, after really three years of broad public input deliberation, they adopted the land use plan, which of course includes the sub-area plan for town center. And then in that same month, in February 2021, we issued the RFP for the town center Phase One project. As Eric alluded to, we had three different applicants for that. They were all interviewed by council, and council ultimately selected Singh for a variety of reasons. I think Eric spoke to the most of those, and to date, they have demonstrated that they are exactly who they said they would be in this project as partners. So later that year in September, town council officially selected Singh Development LLC as our partner via an MOU that was adopted, so that memorandum of understanding defined what the project was anticipated to be, and set the expectations for ultimately getting to this development agreement to define specifically what the project would be and how it would work between the partners. Fall of '21, we put out surveys to businesses and residents regarding design and amenities to begin seeking that public input. January of '22, we held a virtual open house to receive updates. Later that year in September, a project overview was actually presented to this board, including an overview of the project concept and what the development agreement would ultimately be. And then later that fall, the town put out another survey, again, collecting further feedback as we started to put some design and some more concepts to what this project would look like. In January 2023, Mayor Colley provided an update of the town center project to attendees at the state of Morrisville. Were able to discuss it there. That same month, we provided an overview of the town center in the quarterly newsletter that's sent out. And then in May, we provided an overview of the town center to our Performance Measures Advisory Committee to let them ask questions and provide feedback. That same month, we signed with Singh a pre-development agreement. So what we were doing towards getting to the development agreement, because up to that point, we were operating on the memorandum of understanding, which was a very general document in terms of we'll work together, but not a lot of definition initially beyond that. That pre-development agreement established a scope of services that we would try to complete before... feedback as we started to put some design and some more concepts to what this project would look like. In January 2023, Mayor Colley provided an update of the Town Center project to attendees at the State of Morrisville, were able to discuss it there. That same month, we provided an overview of the Town Center in the quarterly newsletter that's sent out, and then in May, we provided an overview of the Town Center to our Performance Measures Advisory Committee to let them ask questions and provide feedback. That same month, we signed with Singh a pre-development agreement. So what we were doing towards getting to the development agreement, because up to that point, we were operating on the memorandum of understanding, which was a very general document in terms of we'll work together, but not a lot of definition initially beyond that. That pre-development agreement established a scope of services that we would try to complete before this full development agreement was adopted and signed, and the focus there was really on site preparation, legal documents, parking data, the traffic analysis, and some of the civil and architectural work that we knew would have to be done regardless of what direction the design went from concept to construction. And then this was the first time, again, last May, that there was a financial commitment on the part of the town, and that was approximately $900,000 to accomplish this pre-development October of last year, the Main Street Plan Development rezoning was first presented to you, and that included several things, an explanation of the Town Center as an established sub-area plan and a land use plan, the proposed principal and accessory uses for what the project would be, and a sketch plan of the property, and that definition of a sketch plan is there for you to review. Additionally, with that rezoning, a TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, was completed, establishing required road improvements, cross-sections, other things related to traffic, also parking standards setbacks and building heights, and there were 10 proposed conditions for the rezoning, which are all currently being met in the current design. The following month, in November, PZB endorsed that Main Street Plan Development rezoning by a 5-0 vote. January of this year, Town Council approved the rezoning of the Town Center Phase One properties, necessary to keep this project moving forward, and then January and February, Town Council reviewed the Town Green and the related amenities as those design concepts evolved. April and May of this year, Town Council then reviewed the Town Center Streetscape Plan, you've seen the core of that tonight again, and then in June, we received a pre-construction cost estimate from Singh. So our agreement with them is prior to this June, we had been working really off of concept estimates, and those were really estimates, because of not knowing exactly what would end up in this concept plan and ultimately would be designed. So through work with council and based on feedback from the community and others, we established what was going to be in there, and so that resulted in a pre-construction cost estimate that we now have and will discuss in a couple of minutes. And then June and July, we are making presentations to PZB and Town Council, ultimately seeking development agreement approval, tentatively in August by Town Council. Any questions on that timeline or history before I move into the agreement?
Just as a point of clarification, I think a lot of the input on this project has been around aesthetics, what looks nice and what sounds fun. We've never reviewed the agreement, and I know it's been mentioned several times it was reviewed with us. There might have been a mention, an agreement was coming, and it was going to Town Council, but I don't want anyone to have the impression that our group ever knew anything about an agreement or about the cost of this project. We looked at pretty buildings, we looked at nice pictures, we talked about mixed-use developers coming in here, that we're going to pick up a lot of the costs, this is going to be great. So I just want to make sure this kind of makes it seem like we were far more involved than what we were. So we're learning and we're coming on board here, but we did not have the agreement, and that's what caused-
No, the full development agreement was not finalized until basically when it was sent to you ahead of this meeting, I think eight days ago.
But no agreement. You were referencing November 23rd was our first review of the agreement. We didn't review-
No, we presented the concepts from the agreement as to what would be in the agreement, but you're correct, you have not seen a full development agreement before now.
No agreements.
But just keep in mind, the cost of this and everything else, that's really outside of our purview. That's strictly a Town Council thing.
I understand.
They are the governing body of the town, and we don't even deal with the cost. So whether this costs $10,000 or $50 million is outside of what we are tasked with doing. We certainly didn't cause the cost to go any, I mean, I, you know, I think there's a little bit too much concentration maybe on the cost, just because that's not something we directly control, or even indirectly.
We're going to pay for it out of taxes, the operating costs.
Understand that, but that's certainly, and I do believe the Town Council will go over this in detail, and they've got two meetings to do it coming up in the next couple of months, so, but anyway.
Did it answer your question? Okay, thank you. So again, I'm not going to certainly read 111 pages to you, but do want to hit the highlights for you and for the audience and those that might be watching of what the development agreement is and why we have it. So what it represents is the formal legal agreement and actual contract between the town and Singh for the construction of this project. Again, it currently identifies the current cost estimate, we'll speak to that in a moment, and we're submitting that for PZB review and then ultimately Town Council approval. It is not the final design document for Town Center, and it is not the final cost document for the town either. It includes all the legal requirements and recitals, as you can imagine, there are many of those that are required for this sort of project with a partnership. It includes the different responsibilities for Singh and for the town, and then it includes design and construction requirements. So not only does it reference back to the Main Street development requirements, but also some other areas that are required specifically for this project. And then it does have several exhibits attached to it that address the description and sale of the property of what we will sell to Singh, the development plan or the concept up to this point that has been created, the project schedule, parking and retail leases, again, parking lease for spaces in the deck so that the public can use those at no cost, as well as a retail lease for our Parks and Rec Group to have their administrative offices, at least when this all opens to start. And again, part of that is because we would like our staff near the park, but part of that is also because we're in a partnership, that lets us start and lets Singh start knowing that there's going to be a tenant there, and so that helps make this, excuse me, fiscally viable for them as well as a partner with us. Don't anticipate that Parks and Rec will be a long-term resident there, but it is an opportunity to get them close to the park and also to create that occupancy for Singh. There was also a right of first refusal for the cottage retail, so again, they will maintain, Singh will maintain ownership of the four parcels that have the buildings that will contain the eight cottage retail units. What we have asked for and they've agreed to is right of first refusal, if in the future they were to intend to sell those, we would have the opportunity first to buy those. I know we had a question last time, we now have a 30-day window to respond to their notice that they might intend to sell those, to ensure that we have time to get to council and present that to them. And then last is a budget estimate for what the public facilities are in this project. Again, just going to offer you some highlights, there may be minor adjustments over time, but this development agreement addresses all the significant points and the requirements that are associated with this Phase 1A project for the Town Center. Again, the only potential changes we might see is revisions to the scope to reduce overall cost, any specific language that might be added for the commercial lease agreement at the time of execution. We have a sample agreement as part of the development agreement, but we won't sign that until the construction is complete and we would be ready to move in. And then the number of parking spaces leased by the town, and then the development schedule overall could fluctuate depending on how, you know, weather impacts and other things that could occur. So going through this, the town funding, the current pre-construction cost estimate as of June is $19,424,960 for this project. This slide breaks down what those different components are. I'm not going to read each one of those lines to you, but this gives you sort of the by amenity component or different aspects of the project that we're funding, where those monies come from. You'll see the last one there is general requirements, and I've offered just a little bit of an overview of what those general requirements are, because that's obviously a vague term. So where will that money come from? That money will come from cash reserves for the town, Singh will be paying the town $1,070,000 for the property they are purchasing, and we also have 2021 geo-bond debt that we can use both parks and streets money. Do want to make a note that we will be paying Singh a 4% project management fee so that they will manage the construction for us, but we will not use any bond money for that, that's not what that bond money was intended for, we'll use other sources for that. And then also, nothing guaranteed, but we have requested through Congresswoman Deborah Ross for $1 million federal earmark. It has been recommended and submitted as one of 15 projects that she can submit, we just don't know if that would be funded ultimately or not, so that there's a possibility that that could also support this project if we receive that grant. Also want to note that the Town Center project will not require an additional tax increase. There was a tax increase in 2021 for that bond issuance of three pennies, there will not be an additional tax for that project now. And again, we also are not having to start the project with coming up with $19 million or $20 million. That will be phased in conjunction with the construction of the project. Based on, again, current early cost estimates, we anticipate that FY '25 would be approximately $4.6 million, and FY '26 would be the remaining $14.7 million of the project. So that gives us a little flexibility in what those sources are and where we're drawing from. It also helps us as we look to what that impact is on our debt model and that we're not hitting that with $19 million all at once. So what is Singh funding? Singh is funding the multifamily, the retail, the parking deck, and the commercial space. Their current pre-construction cost estimate is $85 million. So again, our piece is $19 million, so that puts our investment at approximately 19% of the total $104 million investment that's occurring with the Town Center project. The other Singh funding piece is that the way that DFI gets compensated for their work is that Singh pays them a 1% fee based on the total private investment in the project, but that's between Singh, and they adopt that as part of the development agreement to pay that directly to DFI. So continuing through the agreement, there are some responsibilities for the town. One of those is to hold four events per quarter at the Town Green, because obviously that us activating that space will help Singh to be able to draw people to their shops, to their commercial, to their retail, also makes it more attractive for them to lease the apartments, knowing that there's activity going on in our Town Green. And again, we do pay them that project management fee that I've mentioned, and that's to manage the construction of the public facilities, going back to what Eric mentioned, much more straightforward to have one contractor managing all of this, rather than we manage ours, they manage theirs, we get to the corner and decide who gets to go first, and we're not mitching each other. It's much more efficient to be able to do it all as one project. So they will be managing construction of the Town Green and the amenities therein, including, also will do that Park at Park or the Retail Plaza that's in front of the retail on Carolina Street across from the park, and then they will be managing our costs, or they will be managing the infrastructure that we pay for, which includes the widening of Carolina Street down to Church Street, the construction of the Foxglove Drive extension from Carolina to Town Hall Drive, and then some minor modifications to Town Hall Drive to actually add some additional parking out there as well. Again, that management fee is 4% of the final construction budget for public facilities. Based on the current estimate, our fee would be about $776,000. That puts us just over $20 million as the current town cost estimate for the project. So that fee is established as a not-to-exceed number, so if the project costs were to increase, which I can tell you, I don't believe they will, we're going to work on some alternates and scaling that back a bit, but that wouldn't be more than that, $776,998. And we've worked with DFI, and Eric would tell you that they've done market analysis and confirmed that that 4% management fee is a fair rate for what's going on in the construction world. Again, that leaves Singh managing the project, all contractors, subcontractors, and they process all invoices for town approval. Again, they don't, we won't pay anything until our staff reviews it and approves it. And again, I think Eric alluded to some of this as far as why project, one project manager is advantageous, not going to read those to you again, but there are clear advantages to taking this approach. Singh responsibilities continuing, they're to construct the parking deck and provide the town with a minimum of 80 leased spaces, the current design looks like we can likely get 100, and they have agreed to lease us that town office space for Parks and Rec admin. They will donate the completed Town Green back to the town at no cost once it's constructed, and then they pay the aforementioned 1% fee to DFI. So the development agreement also addresses design and construction, defines all of the following, the scope of work for the public amenities, the requirement for a parking deck, multifamily, commercial, and retail amenities based on the development plan. That's another one of the advantages of having a public-private partnership, is that we can to some extent dictate what Singh does and does not build there. So rather than them necessarily being able to do what may be the best and highest use for them, they collaborate with us, and we're able to get a mix of uses there that will be beneficial to the town and to the community. The design and construction talks about those development standards, many of which were looked at in the rezoning, and then also other requirements that we've included in the agreement. Again, we get town input on contractors and subcontractors, that's to help us protect ourselves. If Singh were to select someone that we've had a bad experience with or had some sort of issue with, we would be able to work with Singh on that for either contractors or subcontractors. This document includes the development schedule, requires notification on any proposed cost increases, that we're made aware of that and approve that before anything were to change, and it also defines how pay applications will be addressed, so that Singh will manage those, but then submit them to the town. Our Capital Projects team will review and approve those before they would be paid. Article six just briefly requires some insurance for the project, that's not a surprise. Article eight, the parking deck, again, we would be signing a 30-year lease for a minimum of 80 parking spaces, those spaces would be on the first and second level, and I say first and second, because if you come in off of the library side, you're on sort of the first level, but you can't come out of there because it's at such a grade there that you can't get out to Foxglove, so the second level is when you come in off of Foxglove, and then there's immediate access to both. Singh will operate and maintain that deck. Again, that was one of the things that was very attractive to our staff and also to Town Council, that we would not need to maintain and operate a parking deck. And our agreement proposes $100 per space with a 3% annual increase for the first five years, and then we reevaluate through collaboration with Singh thereafter. And then again, the Development Finance Initiative fee is included in the agreement as well. Again, sort of referred to these already, but the different exhibits that are in there, so the legal description of the real property is in there to show what's being sold, what's being transferred back, the development plan, which is the current conceptual concept for the project, the development schedule, the land disposition agreement where we sell that land to Singh based on an independent appraisal, the parking lease agreement, the retail lease agreement for that Parks and Rec admin space, you know, we spoke to the right of first refusal on the cottage retail, and then the budget. So that is really a summary of the highlights of what's in the agreement that you've been provided with. Outside of that, the timeline for this project currently is that we anticipate to be able to submit the development agreement to council and then have them review it over the course of July and August. Right now, we anticipate three meetings with council, the first one to really introduce this to them and begin to have conversations about the cost and where we really sort of need to be and what we can look at as alternatives before we really get into value engineering to reduce cost. And then a second meeting to sort of follow up on whatever recommendations they may have made or any changes they may have asked for, and then the third meeting, ideally at the end of August, to make a final presentation and seek approval. As this is going on in early August, we will be going to the Local Government Commission to review the development agreement as well, because we're using bond dollars and because this is an agreement that goes more than five years, it has to go before the Local Government Commission. Their responsibility is basically to make sure that we're doing this in a smart and fiscally responsible way that won't endanger our own bond ratings, debt credit, that sort of thing. August and September, again, the Town Council approval ideally, assuming that were to occur, site plan submittal and would begin in September, ideally be completed in early 2025, and then we would see a groundbreaking in spring of 2025 for the Town Center Phase 1A project. I am happy to take any questions that you have about this agreement.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Kristen?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say I appreciate the additional time that we had to go through some of the documents and the additional history. I wasn't on the PZB when some of these other presentations happened, so this was very helpful. My only comment, and I know we're not responsible for reviewing the budget, as we've already said, it does seem like a lot of money, and to Chris's point, it is our tax dollars, even if we're not responsible for approving that budget. So I hear what you're saying, that council is going to review that, but I hope that there are some places we can find to reduce that total dollar value.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity to give you some updated information, and I absolutely hear you on the budget. And we will start that discussion with council. And, you know, I don't anticipate that when we're done, this will be a $20 million investment. That is a big number. And again, we have to work with our council because there's a fine line there between what we want to do to make it the best we can with that same fiscal responsibility for our overall projects. But thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Chris?
Can you give me an example of an event that had 500 people? I can't visualize what that looks like.
Sure. So an event like that might be our movies in the park or our music in the park. So we typically do both of those up at the Healthy Food Hub. So we'll bring in, we, I don't do anything, the Parks and Rec Department will bring in a band or a performer, and we'll have a smaller group that can fit in that Healthy Food Hub. So that would be an example of a 500-person event. You know, we're still developing our cultural programs, although we're currently doing 19. I would define as pretty significant events every year. We're continuing to look for opportunities to do some more of those smaller events that can be managed. So there could be other cultural events, there could be art displays, there could be a number of things like that that would be in that 500-person range.
But the 500 people fit in the lot that's out there now?
We would be tight at 500 in the lot out there, I think, but we will have lots of room in the Town Green and Stage area.
Let's see, this is another cost question. So, you know, you just approved 2025 budget near $4 million for Parks and Recreation, and now we're looking at adding parking, new, you know, like your overall operating cost of this park coupled with guarantees to keep profits coming into the retail business just seems like a losing end for the city where if you would have just built the park instead of committing all of these resources to bring in crowds to help them get a profit on the retail. I, what's going to be the new operating cost for the park and for rental spaces and for all this parking is another million a year?
So again, the parking spaces, well, total, it will probably be, I would estimate, less than a million, but it will be a meaningful impact on the budget in terms of having the staff to manage this facility and managing the events that will occur. Again, I think part of the benefit that comes from this is the intangibles in terms of, we have a wonderful park system, you know, we have seven fantastic parks. So this will technically be a park and an open space, but it'd also be more of an event forum that lets us bring in different events, lets us continue to support different cultural events that recognize the diversity of our community and do some things here that we can't necessarily do in our other parks. So yes, there is certainly a benefit to Sing, but that's part of how that public-private partnership works because if there wasn't some benefit to them, they probably wouldn't be here building this.
Couple more questions, but you want to go down the line and make sure there?
No, I mean, let you go ahead and ask a question.
Can I ask about the estimate? Just so there's clarification in terminology, they used order of magnitude on all of the documents, which is usually 50% swag either way. And so I want to make sure that when you're talking about numbers and you're using terminology that this is a good estimate, it really isn't. It's just a ballpark number, and because it says 3% contingency doesn't mean it's off. So unless they write something specific in there, that's a term that normally means 50%, it could be over, and that's acceptable because it's early concept. So you could be looking at $30 million for the same thing without even any scope creep once they priced it out in detail.
And we don't anticipate that. So this is, again, this is, it is labeled as a ROM, but it is an estimate that looks at the specific amenities to include. It looks at the specific streetscape, looks at the different things that would go into the pockets. So it is based on specific components that we anticipate to build, and then we'll back off from that. So again, it is a pre-construction estimate that is valid as of June, done by a construction company that may or may not be ultimately the partner for Sing to do this construction. But we do not anticipate that there's going to be a 50% swing, that this would be a $30 million project. We will not fund a $30 million project.
Can I ask one more? On Appendix G, so back to the cottages, just so I understand, is the appendix that's in there now the correct agreement? Because what it says in there now is there is no room for negotiation. It says if somebody comes to them for any part of the property and wants to buy it, you have 30 days to say, I'll purchase it, I'll match that, and I'll purchase it. If they decide to post it for sale, they'll come to you first, and you have 15 days to say, I'll buy it, don't post it. But at no point is it saying, let's sit down. And also, in that agreement, it also states they don't have to pass on our parking arrangement, I don't believe, if they sold the parking garage. That's not in there either, that they could sell to somebody else, and then that's the end of our agreement because it wasn't captured.
So I may have to turn to our town attorney, Lori Jones, for help on one of those. And perhaps I'll let you speak to Bowles before I get ahead of you.
Lori Jones, Assistant Town Attorney. So the right of first refusal is only as to the cottage retail. It does not have anything to do with the parking deck. Right of first refusal typically by definition, it is not a negotiation. It is just an opportunity for the town to meet whatever offer that Sing can obtain. And if we meet it, then we obtain the cottages. If we can't meet it, then they're free to move on, and that's the nature of a right of first refusal. As to the parking lease agreement, the, I would have to look at the assignment section on that. If you'll give me one second. And it may be something that I need to look at and get back to you on. But normally, when there is an assignment, or if there were to be a purchase of the parking deck, a lease agreement like this or a license agreement would be, would flow to the next purchaser. And I can certainly look in the agreement and double check for that. I don't know that it makes sense for me to take up your time looking through this 100-page document right now.
No, 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 that's fine. And I don't need an answer to it. I just, that was just something I noticed as I was reading through it that was worth mentioning. Thank you.
There you go.
I have one more question. On project management and on the schedules, permit?
Go ahead.
Project management. Normally, you see both, both constructions, so you're aligning the construction and you're committing to a communication plan and point of contact so that you're minimizing your costs because it's either the town manager, it's usually the director of engineering that's handling it. You agree to who's making the changes on small things like bricks, and then when does it need to go to Town Council? Are they agreeing to do it Zoom? Usually, it's shared software completely, and if the city doesn't have it, they should be providing that to the city so that they can then go in and look at those invoices, look at all those schedules and be able to do this. You would normally see something like that in a contract that you're making the commitment to how you're going to work. So you're seeing both sides come together and that everybody understands exactly where the project is. So it was unusual that that wasn't included. Did you discuss that or consider?
That's absolutely been the discussion is, so our Capital Projects team, which works out of our engineering department, will be the town's lead on this. So again, they'll be reviewing any invoices, they'll be participating in construction meetings, they'll occasionally be on site just to check our work and make sure that what's being done is to, you know, what the contract and the agreement calls for. We have discussed access to software so that our team can see what's going on with the construction being done by whoever the general contractor is that's working for Sing.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
We'll come back to you, Rick. Ken, Sushma?
So you have mentioned that, like, ARPA is one of the source of your funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm just curious that. So ARPA authorized more than $8.8 billion in state and local fiscal recovery funds to disburse in North Carolina, right? So out of that $8.8 billion, how much did we get?
We got approximately $9 million over the course of two tranches. So we have expended, or at least, excuse me, encumbered the majority of that at this point. We're required to encumber that by the end of this calendar year, and then we're required to spend it by the end of calendar year 2026. So we just actually had a conversation, what's today, this week? Sorry, losing track of summer. We had a conversation this week between Sing and through our Director of Management Services, ensuring that we had the opportunity to encumber that ARPA money this fall, and then, of course, it will be spent as part of the project development.
So all that money will go to this project?
No, no, not. A lot of that $9 million has been spent on a variety of other projects. We did some revenue replacement, we did some other projects that qualified under ARPA, but we do have some money. I think we're at approximately $1 million left that we are intending to support this project with. Thank you.
And I have one more question.
Sure.
So you did the survey, right? Survey with the homeowners or you ran the survey before, you know, proceeding to this project, right?
Correct.
So those surveys were like mailing or door-to-door survey or online? So how did you do that?
So we did that several ways. We did that online. We made that available to anyone and advertised that through our social media, through our Next Week in Morrisville email, through our quarterly newsletter. And then we also attended some different meetings. We were at, like, for example, a police department national night out where we had a tent and were able to talk to people about that and share the survey with them there that they could take with them. Nobody had to fill it out, you know, on site. We shared that through our other outreach, whether it was the online forum or some of our other in-person efforts to receive feedback. We shared those surveys that way as well.
What percentage of the populace didn't participate in that survey?
Very low percentage, which unfortunately is not surprising, given what we tend to get on other surveys. You're welcome.
Yeah, you have to go ahead.
I don't want to get into the budget too much again because it's not our purview, but I am curious. You talked about, you know, part of the town contribution will come from our cash reserves. Do you know by a percentage and by a dollar amount what that amount will be?
I do not tonight. We're still working on that. So we are planning to have some options available for council when we go to them to 23rd. We're still digging into that. You know, there's some option there with some cash reserves. We have some bond options. We have another issuance that's intended for '26 that we could look at. So we're trying to work through all of that, both internally as staff, and then also we have a financial consultant, Davenport, and then also a bond consultant, Womble. So we're working with all of them to let them help us figure out what is the most fiscally responsible way to do that. Also, what's the way to do that that minimizes the impact on other projects that we have coming up and really on our own debt model, which then impacts, are we maintaining compliance with our own financial policies as a town?
Kind of anticipated one of my questions. I imagine that whatever reserves are left, are they earmarked already for other projects?
We have both. We have some earmarked reserves, and then we have some unmarked reserves, some not committed reserves that we have available for. And some of those are in, you know, we have some transportation reserves, we do have some park reserves. You know, right now, the council sets aside a penny every year for parks. They set aside money for transportation. So that money is there, and then, you know, there's always smaller funds that come from closeout this project. We didn't spend it all. We can then utilize that for other projects.
You mentioned Bobbit a couple of times as working with Sing.
Correct.
If I understand you correctly, they are not, as of now, the GC for this project?
Not as of now. They have not selected a GC yet. I think they anticipate doing that in the near future, but as of today have not selected a GC.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I saw their name on one of the cost estimates.
Yep.
That had already been selected. And kind of in conjunction with that, you told me at the last meeting that the town cannot impose its minority hiring requirements on Sing. But has there been an attempt to get Sing to agree in writing that they will use best efforts to meet some sort of minimum minority hiring requirement?
We have had conversations about that. I don't know that we've committed that to writing at this point.
One thing I didn't see, and it's very possible I missed it, but I don't recall seeing any dispute resolution clause in either the agreement or the sub-agreements.
Lori? I do believe we had that, but I'm going to let Lori speak to that.
So there are some types of alternative dispute resolutions with certain provisions. So for example, with the parking lease agreement, after five years, the parties are supposed to consider whether or not the parking space rental fee or license fee should be increased. That is set up so that if the parties can't agree on a fair market value, they each get to appoint people, and then it could end up in arbitration. There is also a provision for that related to fair market value rental of the commercial retail space. There is not a true ADR provision in the development agreement itself. For some of you who may not know what that is, ADR means that instead of going to court if there's a dispute, there is a requirement that you either try to mediate, which is more of an informal setting where the parties see if they can come to an agreement, or you use, you go through a commercial entity like the American Arbitration Association and have an out-of-court private trial, so to speak. It is not, the main agreement is not set up for ADR.
So based on that, if there is a dispute and the parties, they can't resolve it themselves, it goes straight to litigation?
Correct.
There's no, any clause that says instead of going straight to arbitration, maybe you do a pre-litigation mediation first just to kind of cut the cost? Arbitration is a lot more expensive than mediation is?
So there's no requirement for pre-litigation mediation. The parties can voluntarily agree to that, just like they can at any point in time. In North Carolina, any dispute about this agreement would be in Superior Court, given the amount of monies that are at stake. There's also a requirement in North Carolina that those disputes go to mediation. Now, that is after a lawsuit has been filed, but it's not at the end of the process. So there is that opportunity as well.
Thank you. There's been discussion about the town's right of first refusal to buy the cottage retail. If that scenario was to occur, does the town then become a landlord?
We could. We could.
Is that a role that the town wants to be in?
Not particularly. Not particularly. So we, I think we would look at that more as protecting what may or may not go in there. And again, there's clear restrictions based on what the zoning is, so, you know, but again, we also are looking for some very specific type of things there, and we're not looking for others. So we see that as an opportunity to potentially protect, excuse me, protect what might go in there if Sing were to sell them. Again, I think you've probably heard before from Avi that the way Sing operates is they build things to keep them. They don't build, sell, and move on. They build to keep them. They're in this community. Part of their team lives in Morrisville, and the other part lives in Cary. So there, that's again, part of, I think, why they were selected because of that commitment really to this community, not just to this project.
Last question I have is probably for the town's assistant attorney again. A couple of meetings ago, we talked about vaping shops that are proliferating, you know, like weeds in the ground around here now. But we've got two grade schools, you know, right down the road of Town Hall Drive. So is vaping going to be allowed at the park?
No, so we don't. I think I can answer this one. So two things. One, we do not allow vaping, smoking, or anything else in any of our parks. And then if there was concern about like a vaping store going in, that would not be allowed here. Also, I think it's not allowed by zoning currently, but there was also just a UDO amendment that was approved Tuesday night that actually our planning staff presented that would prohibit it as well.
Thank you.
Rick, you had?
Yeah, I just a quick question. So, and I see your point with getting the events here. Has there been any type of, I call it leakage, by having these items here, it's people not going someplace else, traveling to Raleigh, Wake Forest, or wherever for events, and it gives us a little bit more of a playing field in regards to having those types of things to keep people local?
That's correct. Yes, I think what we find is, you know, we do several very large events. If you did not have the opportunity to be at Cedar Fork District Park on July 3rd, we were with 7,000 of our closest friends for a fantastic fireworks show. So I think we're competitive in that sense. And then, of course, you know, we do an international festival, we do Spring Fest, we do other things that we know are drawing people here. So we do think it's some of those more medium-sized. It's also about offering concerts that we don't currently offer because we don't really have a facility to do that where somebody might otherwise be going to Raleigh, to Cary, to Apex. So I do think we can use this as an opportunity to keep some of our folks, our residents and families here, but also we'll start borrowing some people from other communities instead of seeing them go the other direction.
Potential revenue coming in, not only the businesses?
Correct. There is an opportunity for town revenue as well as the facility grows and we can grows and we continue to see the area develop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have one question. You mentioned it was sort of towards the end of this process is going before the local government commission. I'm assuming that you've already worked with DFI and everything else and that's not going to be an unforeseen tripping point that you think everything is within the parameters that they would approve?
Yeah, we actually have met with them already. We did a preemptive strike, if you will, to schedule some time with them, to share this with them several months ago. And they were surprisingly receptive. It's interesting, I don't want to drone on, but there's, there's not, they don't have a lot of experience with public-private partnerships coming through them. So this is one of the first they've seen. So they actually appreciated the opportunity to see it. But yeah, we spent probably more than an hour with them and walked through the process, answered a lot of questions. We've stayed in touch with them as we develop this. So we're comfortable that we should not have an issue with LGC.
Any further questions? So we did have, this is, we still have a public comment that is open. So is there anyone from the public that has a public comment about the town center plan? Okay, saying no, and I will close the public hearing for that. So any, barring any further discussion, I guess we can entertain a motion to recommend approval or disapproval. Unless anyone has any further discussion or questions.
Chairman, before you do that, I think you may need to bring up the standards for review.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go over those with everyone briefly. I think there might be some benefit to that.
Yeah.
As town attorney Gray mentioned earlier in his opening comments, excuse me, review by this board is not required by general statute. Therefore, that town council chose to make it a requirement of the UDO, I do think speaks to the value that town council places on the input and recommendation from this board. Therefore, as you move forward into your deliberation and final comments, you've asked some great questions tonight already. There's been some good discussion. I would encourage, you know, if you want to continue with some of that in your remarks, that will be captured in the minutes. Those minutes are shared with town council on all items that go through this board. The minutes from the PCV meeting are included in the town council's packet. So they could see those before they act. But in terms of the specific review standards, Secretary Dotson has brought those up on the screen. Just wanted to bring those to your attention. They are in section 2524 of the UDO. I'm not gonna read them each to you, but you can see that they really reference general statute requirements and they reference what general statute, the elements that general statute requires to be in a development agreement. So it's more, the review standards speak more to are the elements that general statute requires to be in this agreement in the agreement? And those are really the standards for approval. Now, again, town council places a lot of value on your input. If you have other comments or questions that you want to continue to bring up and enter into the record, obviously go ahead and do that. But in making a formal recommendation, these are the standards that that recommendation should be based off of. And then just finally, and it's more of a point of order, we did have some sound issues at the last meeting. So as you continue with your deliberation, just encourage each of you to make sure that you're speaking into the microphone so that you are caught on the live feed and that the recording picks up everyone's comments accurately. Because we did have some issues with that last time. So just wanted to point that out and make that comment as well.
Thank you.
Yes. So yeah, with this in mind, any other further questions or comments? I mean, so any, so I mean, if everyone is comfortable with that, do we have a motion that anyone would like to make? Can you bring up the, the resolution, just so we can read, I guess, at least the top line out? So we would have that number handy? Or is it? Oh, yeah, right. That's, yeah, resolution. Yeah. We don't need to read this whole one out. We just have to recommend approval of that, thankfully.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 2024 to 13-0 approving a development agreement.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Did you get that, Brooke? Thank you very much. Do we want to take a break briefly or push through? All right. So we will adjourn for, or take a break for five minutes. So please come back, let's just come back at eight o'clock and we can proceed with the next item. Yeah, just when you need to leave, just try to interject. I'll try to keep the...
Do you think we will be?
I have a lot of questions about this one.
Thank you, Lori.
That's because you had some...
Given the number of people here, if they all speak.
That's what it was.
Twenty minutes of that. It's going to spark some discussion on that.
So that's a good sign.
I don't know. We can certainly, if we all decided to group, we'd definitely put them.
I would selfishly love it to be continued. I apologize for my scheduling. I just did not anticipate it going beyond a couple hours.
This is, yeah, we'll have to see how it goes. We may, go ahead, go. So I would just encourage, you know, if we can get through.
How long's our break? You planned on being here for a while, huh?
That's why I'm, I'm just figuring if I wanted to go, yeah, but so.
Yeah.
Like for this? I don't think that, there was a section in there about eminent domain, which is, you know, how the government takes private property. And I think it said, there's no, eminent domain is not going to be used to take anybody's private property. So I think it's just going to use the areas that are already dedicated to, you know, the library, commerce market, and then the area that we voted to allow a couple of meetings ago. Yeah, I mean, it's true. You know, it's a consideration. But at the same time, people might like that amenity. If their kids are going to... You know, I guess a plus and minus to everything.
Do you look at that?
Yeah, exactly. You know, oh, I want to be close to a park. Or, oh my God, I want to be near that park. Oh, yeah, I saw those. Were they in response to this?
Not this.
Oh, okay.
This is where, how long you have been?
Oh, this is, I think, my third term. So, yeah, because I just saw it somewhere that I'm in my third term.
I was thinking we've passed through it. You're right, we're not going to get through it. She's weaving herself.
Yeah, I think.
She's not, I think she's asleep.
It just might get ready to. But, you know, if they are here asking a question, I think we'll try to engage instead of just, okay, thank you for your comments.
I mean, it's good, but on the other hand, they've spent a lot of time.
But look, a lot of this is already out. But no, I don't trust the town. Once it's done.
It was very much, it was very nice.
I have made some other arrangements, so I do not have to leave early.
Oh, good.
I don't want to.
You can probably tell.
Did you want the question seat? Did you want my seat?
No, but I just, this one to me has a lot more.
Twenty people. It's twenty. Twenty is the most, I mean, one place that says twenty. It's unlikely they're reselling whatever, I could say fifty. They're committed to twenty in there. They own lots there now. They could just put, they have people in houses right now. They're updated crappy houses that are on three quarter acre lots. I mean, that, you know.
I would assume so. I'm interested.
All right. All right, if everyone can get settled, we will reconvene. All right. Thank you, everyone. If we can go ahead and move forward with the item 8A, please. Is Ms. Johnson or Mr. Michael going to start?
Good evening.
Thank you.
So it's my pleasure to bring before you all an application to amend the zoning map for various parcels along Clements Drive, Aviation Parkway and Fairview Avenue to facilitate the expansion of the existing campus for the Hindu Society of North Carolina. HSNC is requesting a conditional zoning map amendment for the parcels outlined in red. The parcel, the subject property is approximately 16.5 acres collectively and is composed of 19 separate parcels. Nine of the properties are currently zoned residential neighborhood preservation. Nine are zoned residential transition and one, the current HSNC campus, is zoned office institutional. The current land use plan uses, use is the place of worship in single-family residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to conditional office institutional to facilitate the expansion of the campus. Property information, again, this site is approximately 16.05 acres collectively and is composed of 19 separate parcels. Here are the Wake County PIN numbers associated with each property. The land use plan designates three of the existing parcels as low-density residential. One property is Neighborhood Activity Center and the remaining 15 is institutional. The proposed zoning is conditional office institutional and the current zoning, again, is single-family residential. Uses are single-family residential and place of worship. This property is within the corporate limits. A little background on the surrounding areas. To the north, we have residential neighborhood preservation, single-family homes. To the east, we have industrial management, which is vacant, but the future site of the Wake County Convenience Center and the town of Morrisville's Public Works Facility. To the south, we have residential transition. And to the west, we have residential neighborhood preservation, single-family homes. The land use plan designates three parcels, low-density residential, one property Neighborhood Activity Center and the remaining 15 in institutional. The one, the three low-density residential properties are along Fairview. Proposed conditions, there are 15 total conditions being proposed by the applicant. The first condition just stipulates that the development will be in compliance with the sketch plan. Conditions two, three and five pertain to the proposed priest dwelling units. Condition two stipulates that the units will be confined to the areas defined on the sketch plan as shown and that there will be a limit of a max of 20, 20 future dwelling units and the configuration of the unit, these units are unknown at this time. Condition three clarifies that units will be controlled and will be maintained as by the place of worship and use only for faith leader housing and guests. Condition five clarifies that it will be that the areas labeled for the residence dwellings will only be utilized for resident dwellings, the landscape areas and also used for stormwater control measures. Condition four stipulates that the final design will include a smart show stop. The final location will be approved by the town prior to site plan approval. Condition six and seven pertain to transportation improvements. Condition six, the development will dedicate right of way and will submit a payment in lieu or construct the western half of the ultimate cross-section of Aviation Parkway along the property fundage per the CTP. This will occur with the first phase of development. Condition seven explains that HSNC, the town of Morrisville and Wake County are participating in a joint TIA. HSNC will construct the off-site improvements necessitated by the TIA and these improvements identify three key factors. I'll let the applicant explain those a little further. Condition eight pertains to the traffic management plan. For events that exceed 90% of the onsite parking or if traffic is anticipated to back onto Aviation Parkway, the traffic management plan will be adhered to. Any amendments to the TMP must be approved by the planning director and the chief of police. It's important to note that 90% is approximately 329 spaces of the existing 365 on site today. Condition nine and 10 pertain to Fairview Avenue. Condition nine, a fairview will be used as emergency access only to the main campus. The emergency access will be reviewed by the town and the gate will be installed to disway use for any other use other than those for the residential dwellings. Condition 10 specifies that emergency access, there will be an emergency access easement that will be placed in the property along Fairview. The exact location of the easement has not been determined, but it will be determined prior to the plan, site plan approval. Condition 11 specifies that the applicant will provide the southern half Condition eleven specifies that the applicant will provide the southern half only of the full cross section of the local street for, for Clements Drive, which is sixty-five, sorry, twenty-six feet for fire access, and that is from Aviation Parkway to the new, for the first new driveway on Clements Drive. And I'll point that out when we get to the sketch plan. Condition twelve, all transportation improvements excluding a potential traffic signal on Aviation Parkway shall be installed concurrently with the first phase of development. Thirteen, the development will meet all driveway stacking requirements. Fourteen, the requirement for hard surface parking as required by the UDO will not be applicable during events that require the implementation of the traffic management plan. And lastly, we have fifteen, which pertains to parking for the development. For the initial phase, parking will be, for the initial phases, rather, parking will be provided a rate of a hundred and twenty percent of the total places required by the UDO, and that will be for all phases except for the final phase. The final phase will bring the entire count to what's one hundred percent needed per the UDO. Here is the sketch plan, I'm going to try to zoom in here a little more. So you'll see that the existing buildings are in red. All of your proposed buildings are in orange. The priest dwelling that I talked about earlier is located here in the yellow area. All of these green areas are landscape lawns, you have a festival lawn here and a recreational lawn here as well. The purple denote all of your circulation and parking that's around the site. And this location would be the potential shuttle location or smart shuttle drop off point. I'll let the applicant kind of walk through the sketch plan a little more for you all as well. The traffic mitigation plan. The plan was developed to address the existing and future events and traffic that, and traffic that frequently causes congestion on Aviation Parkway. The plan was reviewed by our special events permit review team, and that was consisting of staff members from planning, public works, fire, and police. There were two circumstances identified that would be needed, that would bring in the need for the traffic management plan. First, you have your moderate events, those are defined as events that anticipate or that do exceed ninety percent of the hard surface onsite parking or when traffic backs onto Aviation Parkway. Two, we have our large events that are expected to meet the items identified in number one. As well, they will exceed at least fifteen hundred patrons, and then we'll have offsite shuttles to, to mitigate that. Staff recommends approval of the requested zoning map amendment from the current designations, which are residential neighborhood preservation, residential transition office institutional, to the conditional office institutional for the following reasons. One, the proposed conditional office institutional zoning district is compatible with all surrounding zoning districts. And two, the requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the development in the surrounding area, thereby resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. This concludes my presentation, I'll take any questions that you all may have. I'll also let you all know that the applicant is here so that they can expound on some of the items that I've mentioned thus far.
Thank you. Any questions up to this point, or I think it may be better to let the applicant explain further. So yeah, we can go ahead and have the applicant come up.
Hi there, my name is Melissa Brand, and I am with Kim Lee Horn. So, let's see here. We'll go back to.
Just a quick, so are you, are you presenting for the applicant for all of this or just the traffic portion?
Um, I can speak to the general site plan, we also have a traffic engineer here.
Okay. You're the general, okay.
Yeah. So for the sketch plan that you see here, we are proposing to keep the existing buildings that are on the site today, but then also add additional facilities that are needed to support the HSNC community. As Brittany said, the new buildings are shown in orange, but there are also a lot of outdoor recreation area and landscape areas proposed as well. The purple denotes the parking spaces that are spread throughout the site to really give a cohesive feel to the circulation routes. And then we do have the yellow area there closer to Fairview Drive, and that's proposed as priest residences. There are some existing ones there today that are inadequate to support the number of priests that HSNC has today. So we are proposing to expand that some, but putting it over on the northwestern part of the site closer to the existing residential areas. And then you see there's also a very large landscaped area kind of on the southern side of Fairview Avenue, just to provide some more buffering and natural areas between the campus and that existing neighborhood. Are there any specific questions about the sketch plan I can answer?
Uh, yeah, I mentioned, we will, I just wanted, yeah, so. So yeah, if we, I guess we have any questions about this, what we've seen so far, Rick?
What's the, what's the parking and the traffic flow right now? I mean, in regards what you have now as a baseline and what you're projecting coming on. You, you have three, three or four different locations access coming in and out?
Yeah, that's a great question, so we are maintaining the existing driveway access on Aviation Parkway, but we are also proposing a secondary driveway on Aviation that's going to be a right in, right out only, that's more south right here, if you can see my cursor there. Just to provide more access points, and then we're also on Clements Drive here, providing an access point kind of halfway down, and then a fourth access point at the cul-de-sac of Clements.
Okay, what currently do you have parking? And then with this expansion, how many parking spots? Basically, what's your traffic count?
So today we have roughly three hundred and sixty-five hard surface parking spots. There are a few unpaved locations. Basically, it's kind of just north of the existing paved parking lot that is used during some events for some overflow parking, and there's roughly capacity for about a hundred and seventy-five additional parking spaces there during events. This plan right here, we're proposing as part of the conditions to provide parking at a rate for the all initial phases of development for a hundred and twenty percent of the UDO requirement. So going above and beyond UDO requirements by an additional twenty percent.
Yeah, what's the number?
So the number, it, it's really going to depend on how much square footage is developed on the site. And right now, we have a maximum that we're proposing, which you can see in this table right here. So we would use that square footage based off the UDO requirement to get to the parking number.
I'm just still curious, I'm a very simple man.
Yeah, so, like, for a total parking count, I mean, right now, the town of Morrisville UDO for a place of worship community, they require one parking space for every hundred square feet of assembly area. So with the square footage we're proposing right now, I mean, we're so early in the process, we don't know how much of that square footage is truly going to be assembly space versus corridors in the buildings, bathrooms, things like that. So it's really hard for me to give you an exact number of parking spaces until we actually go through more detailed design. I mean, if you were to, if you were to basically assume, like, right now on this plan, it has a maximum building program of about a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet maximum. All of that is not going to be assembly space. And I don't know how much will be assembly space, but if you were to assume, you know, seventy percent of that is assembly space, that has, we would have a square footage of about eighty thousand square feet, and then you would be required to have one space per every hundred square feet of that.
So eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
That's right.
What, what would trigger the light at one of these intersections? Is that, have you, I mean, and I know it's premature, but I just, I hate, I like to make people stand up, that's great, thank you. Yeah, I'm, can we get anybody else up there? But.
So Kevin Dean, Kim Lee Horn, I'm the traffic engineer. And so what we've, what we've looked at with this project is the site impacts of the Hindu society. But as was mentioned in Brittany's presentation, there was a joint traffic study performed to capture the impacts of the proposed town public works facility and county convenience center that are proposed on the other side of the street. At this point, at build out of both this project and the public facilities across the street, we're not sure that a traffic signal is going to meet warrants. NC DOT has adopted the manual loan uniform traffic control advices policies, and they typically want to see peak hour, four hour, and eight hour warrants met on weekdays, and those thresholds are relatively high, typically you're looking at fifty plus exiting left turns per hour for eight hours of the day. And we're not sure that any of these facilities are going to generate that much exiting traffic just turning left for eight hours a day. What we do foresee, so I'll jump into the traffic study, this seems like a good purview and a captive audience to talk about a traffic study, which is my favorite thing to discuss. So we performed the traffic study in coordination with the town and NC DOT, and looked at those impacts, identified improvements that needed to be made, mostly turn lanes at the site driveways, but there is the requirement that Brittany mentioned for monitoring for a traffic signal at the driveway for Hindu society, which will align with the southern of the driveways with the town and county sites that are being proposed across the street. I mean, so as site plans are proposed, as site plans are presented for the town review on the Hindu society site and presumably the town and county site across the street, signal warrant analyses will be updated each time, because right now, these are all somewhat atypical uses, and so we want to make sure that we're capturing the, the actual impacts that we're seeing. So like Melissa said, we don't have a specific plan, so we can't guarantee the phase or the specific size of any of the individual buildings, but we have looked at the proposed plan and think that a signal may not quite meet warrants.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so since we're talking about the traffic, I do have a couple more questions about that. So when you talked about the traffic impact study, a lot of what Brittany talked about was more around major events and how they would be managed, but what about the impact to traffic on a daily or regular basis? I know you mentioned it might not meet the threshold of a traffic signal, which is less of a concern to me, but, I mean, there's already problems there at certain times of the day. It's difficult to drive through there, it's one lane in each direction. How much additional traffic is this going to generate?
So on, if you'll give me one second, I'll get to that part of this doorstop of a report. So on a typical weekday, we've estimated that this will add around a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty trips in the morning or afternoon peak hours. So certainly an increase over what's out there today, but there are turn lanes being added. One thing that, that we're keeping in view is NC DOT has proposed to widen Aviation Parkway to a four lane divided roadway. That project is projected to go to right away acquisition in 2026 and then begin construction in 2028. So no specific timeline of when it would hit this part of the corridor, but what we're seeing is exactly what you see, that overall Aviation Parkway could do with some widening, DOT and the town have plans for that. And so we think that in combination with the additional access is going to be big for Hindu society as well, with all of the traffic being funneled into and out of one driveway today, that kind of limits where traffic can enter. But the access on Clements Drive, the additional access point onto Aviation Parkway, we think is going to help kind of separate where that traffic can go in and out.
And I'm sorry if I missed this, but what's the timeline for construction to begin? Would it be well before that widening happened? So would there be several years where the road still is not widened, but this extra capacity is there?
So the, so the, the, the plan, as I understand it, is likely going to take years to build out. Hindu society has been working on this plan specifically for decades to get to this point that we're at tonight. And so we could envision that it will be many more years before, before the full build out of this project could be in place. Now, there's a lot of community excitement, and certainly that's why we're here tonight, but it's, this isn't something that happens overnight. And so we think there's, there, there absolutely could be a time when there is additional development on the Hindu society site, and the Aviation Parkway widening has not been in place. And that's what our traffic study considered. While we know that Aviation Parkway widening is happening, we did not assume that widening would be in place in our traffic study. So when we looked at what improvements were needed, we assumed DOT's project had still lagged, and this project and the town and county got to full build out without that project ever happening. And so I think that may help address it, is our, our analysis is based on that project never happening, even though we fully expect that it will.
Yeah, that, that is helpful. Can you talk a little bit more, because I don't necessarily see on here, you mentioned turn lanes are being added. I think that is one of the big pain points right now, is that there's not any turn lanes into that. I don't see that on here, so.
Yep, this is very high level, so there will be, there is a left turn lane and actually a right turn lane into this driveway on Aviation Parkway today. It's shared with the driveway that turns into the existing convenience center. When we add new driveways onto, when we add the new driveway onto Aviation, we'll be required to provide a right turn lane as well. And then there's the town required thoroughfare widening to meet our half of the four lane section. And so that will end up providing longer turn lanes into the site. And so the, the site driveways will each have, on Aviation Parkway, will each have a turn lane, and those will be designed for full build out of this project, even if only one building has come in. So once we touch an intersection, we'll have to do the full list of improvements, Brittany mentioned that, that they all have to come in upfront, even if the first building doesn't reflect the entire build out of the project.
Okay, all right. I think that's all my traffic questions, but thank you. I do have one other question in regards to the residences that were mentioned here. So on here, it says maximum of twenty dwelling units, but in the presentation earlier, it said max of twenty dwelling units, but could include multifamily, less than fifty dwelling units. So is it twenty or is it fifty?
Yeah, so it is twenty. It's just listed as multifamily maximum of fifty dwelling units, because in the UDO, that's a category of use that's allowed. That's how basically Morrisville refers to multifamily, there's two different types. So that's why it's, I guess, the term is like that, but it will be a maximum of twenty for this site.
Okay, and is there a possibility of requiring that these not be multifamily? Or if this rezoning is approved, is that just part of what would be in here? Because it doesn't seem like there's any other multifamily around here, and to me, that doesn't really fit in with the rest of the residential areas. So I'm just curious why multifamily is on the list.
So it's on the list as an option, that's not to say that's definitely what would be put here. There's a few other, I guess, options listed in that same condition. We are, we listed multifamily simply for efficiency, to kind of keep the development more compact. The main reason why the priest, I guess, priest and guest quarters are needed is because today, there's just not enough priest quarters to support the number of priests that HSNC has. And they also bring in a lot of visiting priests and, you know, teachers and such that can't stay at a hotel due to cultural reasons. So that's really why this need is so important to them. But yeah, multifamily was listed as just an option, just to help keep things more compact. We do also have the requirement on here on the sketch plan where, you know, no buildings would be over forty feet maximum height, except for the temple. So that would help keep it shorter and more, I guess, you know, not stick out as much against the surrounding neighborhood, but that's basically why we've requested it at this time.
All right.
If we have more, we can circle back and just.
Yeah.
I remember landscaping, I don't know enough about how the festival lawn would be used and what would happen there. So what, what can you do to protect the other neighbors? What kind of greenery, and how soon could you put it up so that they're not exposed to construction? And then longer term to a lot of noise from that area, if, if that's what the plan is.
Like, how quickly could we build out the whole camp? Like how quickly could we built out the whole campus or specifically the festival?
Perimeter, what, what was the plan for buffering and?
Yeah. So we have, you know, indicated buffering around the whole perimeter. We've also had a neighborhood meeting, which was not required, but we do want to be good neighbors and, you know, get input, input from all the surrounding people who live in this area. So we met with them back last fall to get their input, you know, and have made changes based off that to this plan. But we are showing buffering around all sides. You know, tree save areas essentially where the existing vegetation would be maintained. And you asked about the festival lawn specifically. That's really just like a large, flat outdoor area where you could, you know, hold events, set up tents, have more of an outdoor space for, you know, day to day recreation, but also the events needed. Very similar to the town green lawn that was on the project presented before us.
Kind of piggyback on what she's saying. So where on here is the buffer area shown?
So it's the green areas.
So you, I mean, forgive me, landscape area is a pretty broad term. It could mean you're going to tear all those trees down and put fine lawn. That's landscaped.
That is, you go ahead.
So street side buffers as well as buffers to neighboring properties would be required per the U D O. And so those would be immediately on the property boundary.
So you would, right. So you'd be, but you'd be, there's trees there now. I mean, I'm looking at it on the map. I mean, you know, it just, there, this is a pretty high level plan. And so it, it does kind of beg some, some questions, I think, just because of the fact that it isn't very clear. So I just want to, you know, I mean, clearly the, the owner of the property next door doesn't want to sell because they would have bought it long ago had they been willing to do that. And, you know, I'm trying to balance the need for growth because we certainly have demand for this type of facility. But on the other hand, if people, you know, don't want to sell their property, we can't make them. You know, sort of the same thing goes for, for like the, the residences, like, I mean, I know the multifamily in forty, forty feet is pretty tall. I mean, when you have an area of single story houses and, and what is a preservation area, I mean, forty feet is significantly tall. I mean, that's three plus stories anywhere you go. Could be four if you did it in a certain way. I mean, what, what is the total acreage of that, that yellow area there? Cause it looks like probably like three quarter acre lots there before maybe or half acre.
It's about two acres for that yellow area.
So I mean, you'd basically be putting in up to ten units in acre in that area, which would be relatively high. I mean, you're right, there are a lot of different things on there. I mean, and the, the comment of just for, I don't know what you say, if it was for expediency or whatever, convenience to just throw, throw in the multifamily. When a lot of those other users, I think, look to be more compatible with an adjacent property. You know, I think that does give me a little bit of pause just without, with, with the low level of detail that we have and, you know, without any sort of anything of that nature. I will say it gives me a little pause. Same thing goes for Clements Drive. I'm not sure putting three entrances off of that is going to really help anything when you still have that bottleneck of turning off of Aviation to get into there. You're going to be sending cars up and down, you know, what's essentially residential street with no connection anywhere. It's a dead end street. I mean, you feel like that's going to work just, I mean.
We do. Yes, sir. So the, the Clements, thank you. The Clements Drive access is, it looks like three. It's really two. It's just a wider. The, the first one you get to is just a wider entrance. It's looking like one way and one way. And that, and that's not to be, I'm not to get into semantics, but just. Yeah, but that, so that's what that is. But we do think, you know, certainly having a second point of access onto Clements Drive, when we're talking about typical weekday operations is going to be sufficient to separate that traffic out. We were also very intentional in our early discussions with staff to protect Fairview Avenue. And one of the things you've heard discussed is that the, the only portion of the site that will have access via Fairview Avenue are the priest quarters. And so in order to protect the, the environment that's back there on Fairview Avenue, the, the, the traffic impacts for that will be limited to access to the priest quarters. There'll be emergency access to the remainder of the site, but we're limiting that. So yes, we do have our primary access still in Aviation Parkway. But having the, the second point out on Clements Drive, even if it does get folks back out to Aviation Parkway, still separates folks from one specific point. But I do see what you're saying.
And, and about Fairview, so we, we have a letter here that was a, a late comment from someone. And, and they, they are saying that people go onto Fairview now and use it as a drop off point. I know it mentioned that that would be gated. So is that gated for vehicle traffic or gated for pedestrian traffic? Because if you don't stop people from walking, you know, and you have hundreds of cars coming in the back sort of door, so to speak. That's still kind of, you know, again, that's an impact on the neighbors that I think could be through a, you know, engineering solution mitigated decently well, but that, that it's hard to tell when you say gated, what that means.
So gated would be for vehicles. We would have emergency service access, so fire trucks and ambulances could get through the gate. But that's the only vehicle being allowed through that gate.
But I mean, if someone was to drive up Fairview Avenue, which is evidently what they're doing now, and get dropped off or just park a car somewhere on Fairview Avenue, there's nothing stopping them from walking from that point into the facility.
Yeah, there is no, like, security gate or anything proposed at this time to prevent pedestrians.
Okay. And then, so I was looking at the traffic control plan and there's a word in there that does a real lot of heavy lifting and it's or. And it's, if it's anticipated to, or backs up onto Aviation Parkway. However, the mitigation plan that has been presented to us requires advanced planning. So if suddenly traffic starts backing up onto Aviation, it triggers that or. However, if people aren't just standing by, you can't actually implement what this is committing you to implement. What, what is the plan with that? If you have an event that suddenly starts backing up on the aviation?
So if I can, a, a little history on the traffic management plan and then eventually hopefully I'll get back to your answer if I don't take too long. So Hindu society has always made a concerted effort to do traffic management on site, but it's not been, it's never been formalized. I think it's fair to say that there's always been an effort to have staff on site who could direct folks to parking and do all those things. What the traffic management plan, the staff initially requested was just for full build out of the project. So the only thing that was requested as part of this project was a full build out and inevitably a phased plan as those come in. But a full build out traffic management plan to see with the new access points, the circulation that's being proposed, how could that work with, with what's being proposed long term? Hindu society took it upon themselves to formalize and strengthen the plans that they already are working towards today. And that's what we see mostly on the left side, where it's going to be more intentional effort to how parking is loaded. The number of folks that are stationed across the site, the kind of tools and technology that they're using and then areas for the, the no drop off zone, the don't block zone. I can appreciate the concerns with or traffic backs up onto Aviation. I think the benefit that we have here is an invested community who already has folks out on site who are directing traffic as part of the Hindu society. And so I think as they see some of those things happening, I think that's where it's easier to pivot into, how do we get into overflow parking and, and those type things?
Okay, I understand. But I mean, like this is a, I mean, the way I'm looking at this, there appears to be six people on the ground that are potentially from the Hindu society or some private security and four police officers.
Yep.
So let's say some event happens that was going to use eighty nine percent of the parking,
Yep.
which wouldn't have triggered this. But then it suddenly backs up on the Aviation Parkway. What happens? Because you've committed, it's in writing, it'll be in the law that, that approves this.
Yep.
So I guess what happens in that scenario?
Then they, in, in some of those cases, it's going to be that they already have police officers on site who are able to, to help facilitate this. In other cases, it's going to be, it's going to be written into the record that this was an event that did end up spilling onto Aviation Parkway and that's noted for the next event that comes around. So.
And, and I guess my, cause my biggest concern is more, I, I think having the additional driveways and spreading people out will help a lot when it's finally built out. But I, there's going to be this time in which there's more demand. I mean, you know, we're going to have more and more demand for this, but those things aren't going to be built yet. So that, that's my really getting to where the final build out is the more of a concern, I think, than what the final build out is going to be.
Sure.
I just think there's a lot of room for clarification and improvement in that part of it, but.
And if I could, I think that word anticipated was intended to go along with both sections of that condition. So if it is anticipated to back up, then the traffic management plan would be required to be put into place. So if there's some clarification of wording that the board would, would recommend, we could work with the applicant on that moving forward. But I think that the idea is if we start to say, see backups, the town is working with the Hindu society and relaying that expectation that the next time you have an event of this size, we are going to expect you to implement that traffic mitigation plan because the experience has shown that at X number of people within, you know, a certain timeframe, that is what we are, you know, seeing in real time.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask one more?
Oh, sure.
Can I ask another question? You talked about Fairview, but not specifically about Clements. So what about the people that live there now? This is going to bring, I would imagine, a lot of additional traffic. Are there houses on, if you could go back to the other map, it looks like there's houses on the other side?
There are.
Yes, ma'am. There are other houses on that side.
Like what's the plan for them?
So on a typical weekday, the way the site's laid out, certainly there will be more traffic on Clements Drive than there is today. But we think that the main driveway on Aviation Parkway is still going to be the, the primary driveway. So not discounting that there will be additional traffic on Clements, but still think Aviation will be the primary access. One thing that we are having to do, and it was mentioned in, it was mentioned kind of tangentially in one of the conditions, was that the base requirement is the Hindu society has to provide half of the local street section along Clements Drive. So that would be curb and gutter and some sidewalk accommodations on that side. But in order to provide sufficient fire access, they need a twenty six foot wide street. And in lieu of widening symmetrically and achieving that width on both sides and impacting the existing homeowners on the opposite side of the street, Hindu society is actually going to eat all of the impacts of that, of that widening. So Hindu society will be widening Clements Drive to have twenty six feet of travel lane so that it can serve as, as fire access. Now, I'll admit that that only goes up to the first access point, but given that that's going to be the primary access onto and off of Clements Drive, that gets fire trucks in, that will be a wider section along Clements Drive than there is today. And Hindu society is bearing the brunt of that. So wider section, better pedestrian accommodations along, I think that's going to help offset some of the traffic that does get added.
So, but are, sorry, are you saying that that's only from Aviation to the first entry? And then beyond that, it will just go back to?
We will still be required to widen to half of our section, but it doesn't have to meet the twenty six feet that fire code would require. So there will still be curb and gutter added, probably some additional pavement. There will still be sidewalk. It just won't be the full twenty six feet of pavement. That transition happens at the first drive.
So you're going to have kind of just almost like a extra lane, I guess?
I guess it'll be a striping exercise and then the benefit of it happening at the driveway is we can kind of drop into or out of that widening there. So it doesn't look like the, the weird lane drop that you see in the middle of some corridors. So I think that's how it'll help.
Is there anything that can, can be done either on Fairview and/or Clements to discourage people from parking there? So what if there is overflow? I mean, legally, people can park on a public road, but.
So that's a great question and something we've talked about a lot with town staff. So on Clements Drive for the side that we control, we are going to add no parking signage along there. Now for Fairview, we don't necessarily control that frontage. So we're not proposing anything over there. It's not that we're opposed to adding something. It's just, you know, we don't own that land for a majority of Fairview. But for Clements, we are definitely working with town staff to propose some signage in those zones.
Thank you.
Just, I just have one question. You referred to or, or alluded to the fact that on some of this area, you will have sidewalk. Cause one of the things with one of the comments from people living there was the sidewalk access. And with all this traffic, it would be a safe regard to have sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's your, and maybe I missed it here. But what's your plan for sidewalk walks throughout this whole perimeter around here?
Like on the public roadways or just throughout the site?
Your, your, your plan is, it's, you know, the plan's saying we're going to have people coming in or as you alluded to with the people. So just to have the safety of a buffer of a sidewalk, I wouldn't call it a buffer, to get back. Just the safety of having an area where pedestrians can walk. Is that a circle both on Aviation and Clements Drive? Or is it just limited to a certain area?
So we will be adding sidewalk on Aviation and Clements for our sides, yes. And then there will be pedestrian circulation throughout the site just for connectivity and such. But, you know, when we do go in with the first phase of development at that point, if, you know, and we don't know when that's going to be, you know, they have to raise funds and the H S N C is super excited about this opportunity, but it's going to cost a lot of money, right? So I don't expect it'll be built, you know, in the next six months. So if NC DOT hasn't gone through and widened all of Aviation Parkway by the time construction begins, H S N C will be paying to widen their half of it right there. I can't speak to the rest of Aviation Parkway, but they will be at least, you know, adding their sidewalks in and such.
Thank you. So yeah, I, I mean, I can see the side path over by Aviation and I guess just the section is what's calling for it over on Clements. That's why it isn't shown there specifically, right?
Right, exactly.
So we, until we, anyway, I think so many more questions, we do need to have public comment on this item. So is there anyone here who has a public comment about this item tonight? No one is here for public comment. We were given the two comments. So I don't know if everybody's looked at those or not, but we've had the emails that were given that Brooke printed for us that was in our package here, so. So any discussion?
I think if, going back to the residences, we talked about the multifamily piece of that. And again, I understand it's only an option, but that to me would be something I would not be comfortable with approving.
I mean, it certainly is the thing that gives me the most sort of, yeah, just because of the, you know, impact. And if it was cottages, I mean, I think we've shown the town that we can make that look pretty good. We've got some of those here. I just have the feeling of a, you know, of a forty foot tall apartment block there, which probably is not going to be what it is, but if it's not what it is, then, right, that is sort of the way I like think about as well. But, 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 excuse me. But what'd you say in what you show is there's tw- twenty unit dwelling? Anything that would have to come back in, they'd have to present a plan for that particular area worth units? If it was more than twenty units there, as shown on this?
If the rezoning is approved as proposed, anything over twenty, yes, they would need to come back. That would be not consistent with the sketch plan that was submitted and it would be a change to the proposed conditions of approval. The actual, as I'm sure the bores, board is aware, once the conditional rezoning is approved, the, the site plan goes through a staffer view, but that happens at administrative level and the board does not see it again. So if there are continued to be questions about the type of residential, whether this is multifamily style, whether this is townhouse style, cottage style, I don't know if the applicant has any thoughts or anything you might want to add about that.
I guess I do have one question first. You know, with the multifamily option, is it the? You know, with the multifamily option, is it the height that you're concerned with? Because we're certainly open to restricting that to, you know, three stories if that would be acceptable.
I mean, I can't speak for everyone else. I mean, that, you know, the more limits, I think, would be better, just for the understanding of what's going to be built there. You know, and I appreciate both sides of it, you know, you guys want to have as much flexibility as you can get. You know, the people who live near there, anything built? We want to at least know what we're going to be potentially subjecting them to and have as, you know, we want to constrain it as much as we can. So, yeah, I mean, the more sort of restrictive and the more clarity that would be given, I think, would be helpful, and I think to everyone except for, you know, being able to build like really tall, narrow buildings. Just not knowing what you're going to build is kind of hard.
Good evening. My name is Sanjeev Patel with Duda Paint Architects, and working with the team here with Kimley Horn and HSNC. The idea is to have more of a bungalow-style or cottage court, I think is the right term that's in the UDO, where it's more of a courtyard arrangement of, you know, two-story townhomes, if you will, arranged in a more of a community organization. So that's the intent. I don't know if that helps answer your questions.
Yeah, it does, and that sounds great, but I guess I just come back to the question of then why are we allowing for something so different? If you have an intention and we all agree to it, then...
I think it was just to build in some flexibility, honestly.
I mean, I just think, certainly, I think it would be, you know, if it was voluntarily changed to something that was a little bit more like what you described, I think that would certainly, most people's minds go a long way to at least that particular area.
You're taking a look at a bungalow craftsman style, two stories, roughly, is what you're suggesting possibly?
I mean, not necessarily talking about style. I think it's more about the arrangement of the units around a common public space.
At Cotton Drive, we have those cottage courts is what they're, they are typically referred to, and it's multiple houses sort of sharing a common driveway and/or with parking kind of going off. And I'm not sure how much parking they would really need, but you could have one driveway that might span out to four or six, I think they have six in some locations there. You're just kind of, instead of duplicating driveways everywhere, you can save a lot of space by having one common.
I just think with that piece of property, if I was there, the buffer, what you're proposing to see virtually, the buffer between the residential and what you're going to build is important, along with some kind of a layout that would say 20 units to see, as what Lee mentioned, as regards to, I haven't seen that, but when I think about bungalows, I think, you know, craftsman styles and single stories or two-story at most.
Right.
So just to take in consideration for the people, the neighbors there.
Yeah, no, I think a buffer is definitely warranted on that edge with the neighborhood.
And I guess, and I'm trying to think, because there are houses on the property now that people are staying in, correct?
Correct.
And so I'm assuming there's at least two bedrooms, probably three in some of these houses. Is this like more than one person living in one actual single-family dwelling right now? Is that the way it's structured? So in the future, that might be the case?
Correct, yeah, that's the idea, right.
So you're not necessarily talking about 20 complete, like, single-family houses like you might normally see, or something less than that?
Yeah, correct.
Because the units might have some overlap, I guess, overlap, I guess, you might say, or whatever.
Yeah.
So is it more like a dorm or is it more like an apartment? Or sleeping rooms?
More like townhomes, if you will, yeah. We can share some examples that we've pulled together just as a precedent, a visual precedent, if that would help.
Sure. I mean, obviously, unless we sort of agree to modify what the conditions are, I mean, that would be the next thing, but yeah.
Yeah, and I would just remind the Planning and Zoning Board, as it's a conditional rezoning per general statute, any conditions need to be voluntarily offered up by the applicant, they cannot be imposed on by the board or by town councils. The conditions do need to be voluntary. However, in making your motion, if you would want to encourage the applicant to continue to explore going in a particular direction, I do think that would be appropriate. And then we could continue to work with HSNC between now and the town council meeting to maybe refine a proposal for that area.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we would like to propose having a limit to the height of a multifamily structure. You know, we obviously have the limit of 20 dwelling units, but a limit of three stories if we do move forward with multifamily. And I guess just to offer some more thoughts on why we have added multifamily to the options, you know, we do have priests at HSNC that, you know, live here full-time. Right now, there's only two priest houses, so there's not enough to support their current campus, much less when, you know, the facility grows. And they, so that's one component, but they do have the visiting priests and scholars, teachers that need a place to stay when they are visiting for short periods of time, like a week or so. So one benefit and reason why we added multifamily as an option is it gives us the ability to have like a studio apartment for those shorter-term guests that would still have their own space and like kitchen facilities and such. But I think that that would still be absolutely achievable, you know, if we restricted the height to three stories. It's just a way to avoid having, you know, separate townhome units that are only used for brief periods. It seems much more appropriate to have more of like a studio apartment option.
So you envision maybe a smaller building that might have multiple studios, is what you're...
Exactly, yeah, that's right. And, yeah, so we'd like to propose, you know, keeping multifamily as an option, but restricting the height to three stories maximum if we do go that route, which at this point, we're not quite sure that's even going to be the direction we go in, but it seems like it could be a good fit for the situation like the studios.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I still don't love the multifamily. I don't really know what the answer is there. It doesn't seem like it fits in with the surrounding area.
Do you mind? Hi, Josh Michael, Planner 2. I just wanted to emphasize what Director Stiegel mentioned is that it's, one of the first conditions is that they have to be in compliance with the sketch plan. So it's, I just want to make sure the board isn't envisioning like a multifamily unit of 150 units cropping up in that location. That's not possible, because obviously they have to go through staff review. So they are limited to 20 units. So I think what they're trying, the applicant team is trying to do is best utilize the space for the cultural necessities provided. So that, I just want to make sure that multifamily isn't just a word that's kind of getting used and giving you the wrong impression here.
I mean, I guess my sort of envision, and I'm sure the neighbors' envision, is that there's a 40-foot-tall wall, the minimum buffer distance away from their back property. And I guess what, you know, I think everyone would like to have is some assurance that that isn't going to happen. And not that I think that that would happen, but, you know, again, this eventually becomes a law that permits a certain thing and that it can't be really easily changed after that. And so, you know, as much clarity, I think, as we can get ahead of time, you know, is always better rather than leaving it more open. You know, because I don't think that they're bad neighbors necessarily, I don't think they're trying to do anything to hurt anybody, but on the other hand, the people in these two roads have really fought hard to keep the character of these roads, to the point of where they didn't want a connection between them. I mean, they, you know, they like the character of that area, and, you know, as much as, you know, again, we'd like to respect that as much as we can, but we'll still understand that obviously HSNC has property rights as well, so, yeah.
And as Director Stiegel mentioned, all conditions have to be voluntary, however, if you encapsulate your concerns and they're on the record regarding the use of multifamily at this point, if you incorporate that into your recommendation, that will be considered moving forward as well, and as well as staff moving forward with the applicant having those discussions.
I have a question. When you say 20 units, does that mean 20 townhomes? Or what does that mean?
It means 20 units. Again, that would, it would vary based on the type of construction, so we wouldn't be able to fit necessarily 20 townhomes, but maybe 20 dwelling units like an apartment complex. Again, some of this, you have constraints based on the size of the property, all of those constraints as far as buffering, all of that would play into the configuration as well.
So is that mean, uh-huh, you can rent out for 20 families?
I don't think the applicant is proposing 20 families, no.
Like, just quick, just a clarification on what you said, is it's a difference between 20 apartment complexes and 20 dwelling units, at least in my mind. You know, if you have like a two-bedroom, you know, bathroom, kitchen, all that stuff, that's one unit. But when you say an apartment, that can have more than one unit in it. So that's why I'm just trying to, in my head, my mind, is to clarify that, is what are you differentiating here?
So I guess, to clarify, when it comes down to units, there can be multiple configurations of a unit style, but we're, they're proposing 20 total units, whether that be one-bedroom studio or any type of configuration of that unit.
One unit for one or two people living in, that's it? Not an apartment complex being considered one, and there's 20 of them?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? So if that's the case, did we have anyone willing to craft a motion, and what would we put into it? Would we want to make any requests? Do we feel like we've adequately sort of conveyed what the feeling is? I mean, I feel like the applicant is willing to work with us, and I do like the fact that you said you would work with the town on trying to do the no parking, because I think that, you know, that is a specific concern that was raised by somebody, and it seems like we could deal with that. So I definitely would encourage that to continue if that's possible.
It's going to get a staffer review.
Of course, of course. Yeah, we're just setting the framework for that.
Want me to make a motion and then?
I move to approve ordinance 2024-228-0, approving a zoning map amendment for the following addresses, 123, 119, 115, 111, 109, and 103 Clements Drive, 0337, 315, 329, 0305, 272, and 309 Aviation Parkway, 164, 162, 156, 173, and 167 Fairview Avenue, properties located on Aviation Parkway, south of the intersection of Aviation Parkway and International Drive to the Conditional Office Zoning District, REZ 230014, with board comments that they would prefer two no more than three-story highs for future discussion with the city. Anything else?
Anything else, anyone? I have a second?
I would second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so it's four to one, Ken is a nay. Thank you. The motion carries. Thank you for your presentation. All right. Can move on to staff comments.
Thank you. Just a few updates since your last meeting, go over some of the activity that's occurred in June. Town, or, I'm sorry, the special use permit for Duke Energy Substation on Airport Boulevard that was approved, that was an item that did not come before you special use permits go straight to town council, but Duke Energy did propose to build a new substation on Airport, kind of across from the Spark Development and some of that development, McCrimmon, so the special use permit for that was approved. Still a lot of work to do in terms of their site plan and identifying utility transmission corridors to reach the substation, and a lot of that is under the purview of the Utilities Commission, but did want to update the board on that. In terms of administrative approvals, there was a 332-unit multifamily development approved on McCrimmon, that is a Bainbridge project, so you could anticipate construction on that beginning relatively soon. I think some of you are aware, some of you may not be aware, the zoning for McCrimmon does allow multifamily, but with a spacing requirement between multifamily. So at this point, we suspect, I won't say 100% for sure, that we are built out in terms of multifamily that will go along that corridor. A few other updates, the Mooresville Parkway Access Management Study, that was accepted by town council at their last meeting this past Tuesday, as was the Stirrup-Iron Creek-Greenway feasibility study. The Smart Shuttle celebrated 1,000 days of service on June 28th, so excited to hit that milestone. Also wanted to provide you an update on the text amendments that you reviewed a few months ago related to tobacco vaping, some of that came up in this evening's discussion. As a reminder, there were other amendments packaged up with that related to masonry painting and some other things. But town council did approve those amendments at their last meeting. There was some additional discussion by council and really a desire to rein in particularly the tobacco and hemp portion, to limit it within town to the extent that would still be legally defensible. So that ultimately resulted in the buffers that we had previously discussed about and adjusted with the Planning and Zoning Board, but with a significant change that it's only allowed in the RAC district, so that's kind of on the north side of town by the Shiloh Crossing Shopping Center, and there's another small RAC area up on the north side of town as well. So I wanted to update you on that. And then we have a handful of staff updates that I wanted to make you aware of, share some accolades for the staff. I know many of you are familiar with Amy Lindley, our former Development Services Coordinator. She often served as your backup secretary to the board. She retired at the end of June, so we are happy for her, we miss her, but we are happy and excited for her. With that, Kimberly Jones, who was one of our permit technicians, moved into that role. So, you know, from time to time, you may see her at a meeting if there's an occasion when Brooke is unable to attend. Also wanted to congratulate Brittany Johnson, sitting in the back, she has been promoted to Planning Manager within the department, so congratulations to her. And congratulate Planning Manager Elliot Ward, who received his AICP certification, that's a big deal in the planning world. So wanted to congratulate him on that as well. But that is all I have.
Thank you. Any comments?
Rick?
I have a question. Any update on the Church Street traffic study and/or anything going on with the TOD?
Yes, so Church Street Traffic Study was complete. You may recall that when the TOD Small Area Plan was forwarded to town council for review, there was some additional discussion about traffic on Church Street and those impacts, so they did direct staff to work with Kim... So they did direct staff to work with Kimley Horn. We worked with Kimley Horn on a traffic impact analysis. The findings of that analysis showed that Church Street did not need to be widened. It did indicate that when TOD is built out, that there would likely be the need to add turn lanes. But felt that it was better to decide where those turn lanes should go and what those exact locations should be when we had a specific development plan to go along with it. And that would happen with a, with a TIA, that would happen as, as part of any site plan review process. So ultimate recommendation was to keep Church Street at two lanes. With that information, town council did approve the TOD SubArea Plan. So we have circled back with Howso Levine, our consultant on the project, and are having discussions with them about moving forward then on the zoning for TOD, which would be the next step to update the zoning to implement that vision.
Thank you.
Only because it's top of mind with the cricket tournament that's going on right now. But you're talking about Church Street planning. Are there considerations given to how that's going to be handled moving forward? I think it's very frustrating for people who live on the north end of town. Is there any consideration to widening portions of Church Street that would make traffic flow easier up to the park?
So as part of the traffic study, the consultant was also given a traffic impact analysis that was done in association with some improvements to Church Street Park. So you may be aware that just south of the park, there are a lot of improvements going on. And that TIA really focused on review of special events. So the consultant had that information. They did incorporate it into the study and into their findings. And the Church Street study, let's see if Josh is still here. It looked at numerous, and he led the study and worked with a consultant on it, which is, which is why I'm looking over to him. It evaluated multiple intersections along the corridor. I think it went down, didn't go all the way down to Jeremiah, I don't think. But it went south of McCrimmon and all the way up to, I think, Everett's Field. Okay, so it did look at other intersections along the way as well. But with the fiscal year '25 budget that town council did recently approve as part of that, an update to the comprehensive transportation plan and funding for that was also approved. We're not anticipating a complete overhaul of our comprehensive transportation plan, but more of a strategic update. And so there are going to be opportunities to look at some additional things with that update. And that would be something that would be coming to this board.
Thank you.
Just want to thank you for all the effort over the past month and the last 17 years on Town Center. But there was an enormous amount of effort to get all those documents and answer all of our questions. So truly, I appreciate it, even staying late this evening. So thank you so much for the efforts. Helped everybody get to decisions.
Ken? I'll echo Chris's comments. Thanks to everybody for staying late and for all the work on this. It's helped to have all the additional information.
Absolutely, and appreciate all the board's comments. It always helps to make projects better.
All right, thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Yes, definitely more fun. Thinking about all the additional cards that are going to be lined up.